Whereas, the people of Mount Clemens, through their duly elected officials, have a long history of recognizing those individuals in their midst of give of themselves of the human and the public good. And whereas, after eight years of public service as a city commissioner on the Mount Clemens City Commission, Roger Button has chosen, sorry, has chosen not to seek reelection. And whereas, Roger Button was first elected to the City Commission in November 2011 and was successfully reelected in November 2015. And whereas, Roger served in the role as Mayor Pro Tem from November 2017 to November 2019, assuming an official capacity in the absence of the mayor, as well as serving as a trustee on the Mount Clemens Retirement Board for the past four years. And whereas, during his tenure as an elected representative of the city, Roger was entrusted with the responsibility of evaluating and voting on a variety of issues and concerns that would provide the best possible service to the residents while keeping the city financially responsible. And whereas, in addition to his elected service, Roger has dedicated his life to the youth in Macomb County, not only through his 35 years as a teacher and as a coach in the Lance Cruz School District, but by serving as a social worker with big brothers, big sisters in Macomb County, and a dedicated volunteer at the Macomb County Youth Home. And whereas, over the course of his career, Roger was recognized by several organizations for inspiring and shaping the lives of countless student athletes when he was inducted into the Macomb County Coaches Hall of Fame, the U.S. Lacrosse Michigan Chapter Hall of Fame, the Michigan High School Lacrosse Hall of Fame, and presented with the Michigan High School Coaches Association Coach of the Year. And whereas, Roger's mission to improve the lives of youth and their families prompted him to become the chairperson of the Macomb County Community Coalition for Youth and Families, an organization that strives to present, sorry, prevent and reduce substance abuse in our city through education and awareness activities. And whereas, Roger's infectious optimism, kindness, and leadership skills, along with and his strong contributions to the city of Mount Clemens, will never be forgotten. Now therefore, I, Laura Crop, Mayor of the City of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the City Commission and all our citizens, do hereby extend to Roger Button our appreciation for the efforts he exhibited through his eight years of public service as an elected official for the City of Mount Clemens, and thank him for his dedication to the residents of Mount Clemens. Dated December 16th, 2019.
I thank the Commission, the mayor, the administration, and the staff here at Mount Clemens City. And I just, I'm overwhelmed. So, I thank you very much. It's been a blessing to work for the city. I still plan to do things with and for the city. I just think it's time to step down from the Commission, but I'll still be around. So, thank you very much.
Do we have any other announcements, acknowledgements? Okay, moving on. I need a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Support.
Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
This is the part of the meeting where we have public participation. We ask that all of the candidates who submitted an application for the City Commission vacancy, please come forward and introduce themselves during this time. But also, this is a time where all public is allowed to participate. You have three minutes to speak. We just ask that you give us your name and your residency.
Can you do this first?
Sure.
Hi guys, Brandon Gobitz, 312 Cambridge. And I did submit a letter asking to be involved with all of you guys. So, I would love to do it. And, you know, I've been around with the City of Mount Clemens my whole life, starting from kindergarten at St. Barry's美德学校. So, I would love to, you know, get more involved and see the city into the future. So, that's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I have been a resident of Macomb County, Mount Clemens, Michigan for 53 years. My grandmother was raised here, my dad was raised here. I currently work for Macomb County. I've been there for the last 20 years. I am here to serve and to help bring the city back to where it used to be. And I thank you for sending me the letter so that I may have a chance to interview. Thank you.
Okay. And next candidate?
Good evening, Kathleen Kelchner, 636 Harrington Street. As you are aware, I ran for the City Commission this fall, and by close margins, was defeated. But grateful for those who were elected, so. In any case, that, my desire, what drove my desire to run for Commission originally is still what motivates me to submit the application for the appointment of the position. My goal is to be part of the team that advances our community and work together to achieve the objectives. So, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Good evening, Chris Lockrits, 287 Euclid. I'm pretty sure everybody knows, they saw my few signs. I lost a very close race to our current mayor. It was a couple votes. But I believe I put in my application to get on the City Commission, because I believe I can help Laura and everybody else that's on here continue on and get in Mount Clemens forward. So, thankfully, I am awarded the opportunity for this, but under unfortunate circumstances. So, thank you.
We should have one more candidate?
My name is Gina Pelazolo, New 51 North Island. I wrote mine down, I'm sorry. I just wanted to share a little story with you. At our very first neighbors helping neighbors cleanup, we had an overwhelming turnout of six. Six. All of us complete strangers, we worked for hours in the hot sun to help two neighbors in need clear the overgrown fence line between them, when we finally all collapsed in the shade to admire our progress. One very red-faced volunteer with bits of leaves stuck in her hair plopped down on the cooler and said, "It's gonna be a minute before my knees, but let me get back up, guys. While I'm stuck here, is there anything that you would like to know about our city?" The rest of us looked at each other thinking, "Who is this lady?" She then said, "I'm a city commissioner. Does anyone have any questions about how the city works?" In that moment, I realized how little myself, as well as the majority of citizens, know, and how little involvement they have in local government. When an open dialogue is maintained and encouraged between the public and our elected and appointed leadership, we can truly move forward as a team. The empty seat at your table holds a lot of things: memories, accomplishments, friendship, heartbreak. It also holds opportunity. Being active in the community has given me the chance to speak with so many people and has also shown me a need to be met. In this case, it's not to clear a fence line, it's to be someone with passion, teamwork, and leadership skills, who uses them to tear down the perceived boundaries between citizens and their leadership. Including the voice of an everyday citizen in your discussion is much more than just a fresh perspective. It's an opportunity to tap into our city's greatest resource, its citizens. I'm asking the Commission for your support to become a member of your team of six, which is a vital part of a much larger team of 6,235 and growing.
Thank you. That would be all of the Commission candidates. So, anyone who would like to come up for public participation?
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. You learn in public speaking classes that people hear your first 30 seconds, so I'll do the important part first. Something's very disturbing I've heard in the last two weeks, one in person, one on the phone, that during the campaign, and to me, kids are hands-off, and you keep your mouth to yourself where people's kids are concerned, but the remarks were made by someone that Ms. Crop didn't love her children. I've checked, and although it's kind of every dog for himself in a campaign, and who cares what goes on, that is a sueable offense. I can provide you with the names and phone numbers and addresses, if you want, of the people who will be witnesses, and you can sue for slander. Okay. That's the important part. And the other important part is, are any of you aware that the charter's 56 years old, or 65 years old? Hasn't much been done to it to upgrade it, update it. Specifically, where it talks about remuneration for mayors and commissioners, I remarked once that I had done a study, quite comprehensive and valid, of elections in this city. And after the installation of that charter in '54, I watched as the representation was sucked from the southeast quadrant, because in that time, there was no civil rights. So, the lower-income black folks had nobody to speak for them. Then it was sucked from my quadrant, which was the low-income whites. Then it was pretty much sucked from the southeast quadrant, because although they had money, they were still black. And the power resided since that time in the southeast quadrant, southwest quadrant, sorry, which I've always pejoratively referred to as the rich white folks. And if you want to challenge that, thank God, we've got her. That's, you know, once in a while, we have a Commission that has somebody else. Southwest quadrant, southwest quadrant, southwest quadrant, southwest quadrant, southwest quadrant. Any question in anybody's mind where the power lies in this city? And you know why. The other thing that was brought up and done was they left the remuneration very cheap, low. So, in the days, I remember when a former mayor said to my dad, "Yeah, we'll starve them out, we just want the good addresses." And if you wonder why more people don't run for office, who can afford to give their time away? Most of the people I know in my quadrant, with their time, they eat, they sleep, or they gotta sell their time, they can't give it away. So, it's time to review your charter.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dr. Wild, 276 Riverside Drive. At the meeting on November 4th, Commissioner Menzer mentioned a recent incident with people being caught on camera with a bow, as in archery bow, in Sleepy Hollow Park. I commend her for raising the issue. That was my surveillance camera that caught the images. I subsequently learned that south of the park, a few days later, a dead buck was found, killed by an arrow. I do not know whether those photographed with the bow killed that deer. The only evidence that I have is circumstantial. Regardless, what are the possible justifications for someone being in this supposed wildlife sanctuary, as the city described the property, with a bow in the darkness when the park is closed? Hunting is illegal in the city, as is simply being in the park at that time of day. And even if having a hunting license, the date and time were in violation of state law as well. I would hope that all city personnel share Commissioner Menzer's concern about this, but I'm afraid there's reason to doubt it. Commissioner Menzer requested that anyone who might know the identity of these poachers, or any poachers, report it to law enforcement. I have very good reason to believe that law enforcement has an excellent lead on the identity of one of the people caught on camera. On November 5th, 37 days after making my complaint, I had a chance encounter with the deputy to whom I had made the original report. He conceded that the suspect had never been questioned, but implied that it could still happen. It has now been 64 days since my complaint, and no one has gotten back to me. Shortly after making my complaint, Sergeant Gillespie responded to an email and wrote this in part, quote, "I have spoken with Jeff Wood and Lisa Borges, and I feel like we're all on the same page regarding the situation," end quote. He had also said to me on the phone, in response to a question, that his department's handling of such a matter could be affected by the input from the property owner, in this case, the city. I understand that this is my opportunity to speak, rather than to get an immediate answer to a question, but the obvious question is this: Was Sergeant Gillespie correct that he and the city are, quote, "on the same page," when that page, apparently, is that nothing is to be done, even when a suspect's identity is almost certainly known? It seems we have quite a mismatch in reactions, with Commissioner Menzer asking for the public's help to identify poachers, but city management apparently doesn't call for any action at all, even if a suspect is identified. There's more to say, but my time is limited.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? I need to move on to Agenda Number Eight, Approval of Minutes from previous meetings. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the regular commission meeting of November 18th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Agenda Item Number Nine B, Adopt amended City Commission Rules and Procedures Resolution. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the attached agreement for 2020 Macomb County Animal Shelter Services as presented. Support.
Each year, Macomb County sets fees for animal shelter services provided by the county. The fees are adjusted based upon inflation, and the Michigan Department of Agriculture requires holding times for stray pets. The fees are set for the entire county and cannot be negotiated by individual municipalities. The only other option available to a municipality would be to opt out of this contract and provide the services themselves, which the city is currently not equipped to perform. This contract has been reviewed by the city attorney.
Does anyone have any questions, discussion? Commissioner Menzer?
I just had a question under, on Page Nine, under Item Three. The Macomb County Animal Control will not accept any animal that is injured requiring immediate veterinary care. What do we do with those?
We work with several different veterinary clinics and emergency.
And rescue organizations.
Rescue organizations and such.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Item Nine C, Approve Purchases and Payments of Invoice. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented. Support.
At a special organizational meeting of the Mount Clemens City Commission held November 12th, 2019, the Commission approved making amendments to the rules and procedures resolution as follows: To include an additional public participation being held as Item Number One L for two minutes during regular meetings of the City Commission only, and to rescind the quarterly department head reports in Item One D.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Seeing none. Roll call.
Crop.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Moving on to Item Nine C, Approve Purchases and Payments of Invoice. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
I'll second it.
Comments or discussion?
Yes, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Nope, okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Menzer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Consent Agenda. There is none. And the City Manager's Report.
The tinsel tour will kick off Tuesday, December 3rd, from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM here at City Hall. Stroll through this spectacular array of decorated Christmas trees, visit La Santa, and enjoy a cup of hot chocolate while listening to the North Broadway Church of Christ Choir. Trees will be on display from December 3rd through January 1st. The Downtown Development Authority has begun its Free After 3:00 Parking Program that will allow visitors to park at no cost after 3:00 PM during the week. Parking is always free on Saturdays and Sundays. The curbside compost pickup season has been extended for one week and will now end on Friday, December 13th, 2019. Nominations are now being accepted for the Local Treasurer Award. Nomination forms are available at City Hall, in the City Manager's Office, and on the city's website at www.cityofmountclemens.com. The deadline to submit nominations is Monday, December 16th, 2019, at 4:30 PM.
Very good. Moving on to Citizens' Comments. I'm sorry, Commissioner's Comments, but yeah, go ahead.
I'm just confused, because my memo right here says composting ends the sixth.
I extended it after the agenda was produced. Therefore, I extended it. Originally was set to end. Compost, curbside compost pickup was originally scheduled to end on December 6th. I have recently, because of that snowfall and the weather conditions, we have recently extended that curbside compost pickup for one week, and now ends on December 13th.
Okay. Do you even put a statement on the webpage?
We will, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for Commissioner's Comments? We will go ahead with Mr. Campbell.
I want to thank Mr. Wood for getting the curbside pickup extended for a week, because leaves are everywhere still. So, thank you for that. And I'd also like to thank the candidates that have applied and came and introduced themselves tonight. It was very nice to see everybody. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond?
I would like to thank Mr. Button for his years of service here in the City of Mount Clemens. I appreciate that. You've been a great influence, just not here in Mount Clemens, but in Macomb County. Also, as a newly elected official for the City of Mount Clemens, I follow in your footsteps and admire your hard work and your dedication to the City of Mount Clemens. And also, it was a great, I mean, I'm sorry, it was great meeting all of the candidates tonight to put a face with the names.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Fournier. Sorry.
I also appreciate meeting all the candidates tonight, though we know a couple of them. There's a couple new faces, so that's really very good. And of course, I think everyone knows how I feel about Mr. Button. He's been like a mentor to me when it comes to this position. And I'm sitting in his chair that he sat in, so I feel very privileged for that. But his dedication to the city and to youth and to just people in general, he's truly a great man, and I'm very proud to know him. I was, I think that we should, I want to ask City Administration to have a response to Mr. Wild's discussion regarding the poaching. I personally would like to understand why, if there is a truly was a suspect, why nothing was done. I realize it's a difficult situation to find somebody that does that, especially in the middle of the night, and especially in the middle of a park. But I think if there is a way, we should investigate it. We don't want someone running around the city with a bow and arrow that is capable of killing a buck. And the other thing I would like to get, that I intend to follow up on, and I apologize not having it tonight, was the lady that requested that we have some type of a tax seminar or something at the library to, maybe to just tell folks what they can do about their taxes when they get behind, and just give them the procedures. And I think that we need to follow forward on that and do something. I think it's a good idea and one that needs to be followed up on. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Well, wow, what a parade. A great day, wonderful crowd, and the mayor and all of our commissioners were in attendance. A quick shout-out to Mary Vic Spalding and her husband Jim for the donuts and coffee at her funeral home in the staging area. They've done that for the last 20-some-odd years, and not that I needed another donut, but I had one. It was great. The shop locally on Saturday, December 30th, Monica and I were downtown at Champagne Chocolates, my favorite store. Maze for lunch, and Max and Ollie's to spend some money. It was nice to see Roscoe and lots of people on Macomb Place. Let's keep it up. And also shop down Cass Avenue and north and southbound Main and Crocker Boulevard. Thank you to Roger Button for his years of service to the citizens of Mount Clemens. Roger and I served on the employees' retirement system, and we can proudly say, Roger, that we're funded at 100%. So, you bet. Everybody who can retire will get their check. So, we're doing great. It's nice to see so many people interested in the City Commission seat. I have the honor of sitting at Sonny Ford's spot at the table, and we all miss him. And with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Commissioner Menzer?
Roger, I don't know who's going to keep me in check if you're not here. It's going to be a big task for somebody, and we will miss you. I liked the parade so much, I marched in it twice.
Yeah, you did.
I marched in it with the Mount Clemens Optimists Club, and then I ran back and marched with neighbors helping neighbors. I think that was the most fun float we had. I too participated in Small Business Saturday. I went up and I too visited Champagne Chocolates and bought, of course, white coconut, white chocolate coconut haystacks. I hit Max and Ollie's. I hit The Nest and bought wine glasses, and I cannot tell you what they say. It would be censored. And I hit Pops and bought my dad some butterscotch disks. And I bought caramels for the Anton Art Center employees, and I went there and I spent fully one-third of my paycheck that I will get this Friday. So, it was a wonderful time. There were a lot of people there. We have some really great stuff in the shop. I spent a lot of money at Weirdsville and paperback writers, and I have to go back on Friday and pick up all my goods. So, there are great things downtown for you to buy, for gifts for yourself, like I did, for, you know, your friends and family. And the Anton Art Center has a just- our library will be having a Christmas concert from the Macomb Area Community Band, and if you need some enticement, they're serving cookies. So, please stop in. Our library is doing some wonderful things. The Mount Clemens Goodfellows are selling their raspberry newsletters this year on Thursday, Friday, the 13th, and Saturday, the 14th. They, you remember, they haven't sold for the last couple of years, so this is really important for them to support their effort in No Child Without a Christmas. And if you don't want to, you know, buy a newspaper, or you're not around that day, you can send a donation to them to, you know, the Goodfellows, P.O. Box 421, Mount Clemens, 48043. MLive Detroit. MLive Detroit has named the 2019 high school football dream team from Metro Detroit. Tayshon Peterson, a defensive back on our football team, gathered an honorable mention. He is the only one from Mount Clemens that did, but that kid is going places. As is Don Williams. He's a senior. He has received two scholarship offers based on his grades and his test scores and not just his football, you know, skills. He has accepted from Ferris. He is just a wonderful kid. He's also the president of the Mount Clemens Junior Optimist Club that goes on at the high school. So, good things are happening in our high school, in our school system. Thank you.
Ditto, and all of those wonderful things that you guys had to say. I too would like to thank the parade committee. It was a beautiful parade, and I enjoyed participating in it, and I would like to also thank Mr. Button for all of the years of service. It was wonderful sitting next to you and learning from you all those years, and I am really looking forward to the tinsel tour tomorrow. So, remember, 5:30, 5:30 to... Five o'clock. Oof, I better be here on time. Five o'clock to 8:00. And we are going to have some really beautiful trees out there. There are many that are already decorated. We're the commission, we're putting a tree together in honor of Mr. Ford, Commissioner Ford, and so come and check all those out. And I'm really looking forward to the interviews next week for the candidates. It looks like we have some great candidates. It actually looks like it will be a difficult choice, so, which is a great position to be in. So, thank you very much for your interest and your time. And with that, I, oh, I'm sorry, I have coffee talks. Next Tuesday would be the second Tuesday that I would have a coffee talk, but I have jury duty, so I will not be holding coffee talk that day. I moved it back to Monday, which I believe is the 10th? Yes. So, nope, yes, 9th. 9th. Oof, these days are flying by. So, it'll be Monday, the 9th, at John's Family Grill at 9:30 AM, and then Thursday at 6:30 PM. No, that would be the 10th, 12th, the 12th, sorry. Yes, the 12th of December at 6:30 PM, so in the evening if you have to work during the day. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Roll call? Or all those in favor? And those opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.